Okay, good morning. Cassie, you ready? Sorry, should've asked you first before I. Call the infrastructure meeting to order notice was properly posted on December 8. All three districts are present. Item one is to prove the minutes of November 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item two is the tip two and tip two A budget. Anything here Stacy?
No change.
Okay, questions of Stacy? Otherwise, no action. Item three is an update on our capital improvements list. Stacy?
Got one new request. Turnstiles in all the buildings, they want to replace those, the sheriff's office. We're probably gonna replace ones in this building with a project. We can do the same in the ICB. But there's courthouse and juvenile that have current turnstiles. So they want to add a project on your list, about a hundred and ten thousand for the two locations where we don't have projects.
Okay. Is there a motion to add that to our unfunded, or I think it's actually referred to as project anticipated on this?
And is there, is it adding, or is it replacing existing?
We'll replace existing, but we'd be adding them as a project on our list.
Yeah, okay, so I'm fine with adding it onto this list.
Moving for a motion. Also move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Stacy, as you know, we've made a request of the OIA to issue bonds on behalf of the PBA. And in part of that, at least the recommended projects for consideration by the PBA was security enhancements, and I think this would fit nicely within that. So, we might just keep that in mind. Alright, anything else?
I'll move to receive your report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Stacy, the next item is, item four, it's the ARPA capital projects list. It's the one that you do. Is there anything that we need to do here?
I'm gonna have a couple of projects that actually underrun, maybe by the end of the year. I assume you want to put that money back in the main account where it came from, and then have P and G and BLCC reallocate it. This will have a good process, can follow it.
Yes.
Cause I'm gonna need some money on some other projects, instead of moving them from project to project, moving it back to base and then reallocate it. I think that makes the most sense and easiest to try.
How much money are we looking at reallocating right now?
Well, I think we're gonna have a couple hundred thousand to move back.
Right.
And then we're gonna need some of that for other projects.
What projects are you identifying for that? What, you said a couple of projects, which ones are they?
That we're gonna probably add to.
No, I think that would be overfunded.
Underrunning, we're gonna underrun the third floor purchasing, and we're gonna underrun the juvenile rough.
And Stacy, on the projects that you mentioned that you're gonna need additional funding on, what are those looking to be?
Emergency management, and probably the front entrance.
What was the total of the projected underruns?
Just, just over two hundred thousand underrun.
And your cost that you're projecting exceeding for those two projects you mentioned?
I don't have that yet, but I'll
When we have that?
I'll keep in the loop on it, probably the end of the year.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. I'll move to receive your report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, item five is continued discussion on possible utilization of space at JJC. Hi Hannah.
Hi, I wanted to come back to you with some cost estimates. I'm still waiting on the final quote for the glass door, for the, for the DA's move to the fourth floor. That's the only thing I'm waiting on. Esther Brock is confident, based on the verbal quotes, that it'll be between five and six thousand dollars total to build the walls out, labor included. Obviously not labor included, because we're providing the labor, but all the materials included to finish out their reception area, it'd be between five and six thousand dollars. I also had him get quotes in case you guys went the other way and looked at renting the floor out to someone. If we were to re-carpet the fourth floor and all the areas that it needs it, it would be over ninety thousand dollars. So if you were gonna move people in there that weren't current county employees, that could move in in the current condition of it, it'd be that much to re-carpet. It would be over twelve hundred to paint, and that's just materials for paint if we were to repaint the fourth floor. So I kinda wanted to bring it back to you and let you know what those numbers looked like. We are, the DHS has requested an updated contract. I provided them with that, and they changed their mind and now want to do an addendum versus a new contract, so I'm working on that to get that to them. I'm not sure what the difference is in their procedures, but they have less red tape to cut if it's an addendum than if it's a full contract. So, working on getting that addendum to them. They haven't opened yet on the third floor, but they're very, very close, and they still anticipate a January one date of being out of the fourth floor.
But the substance of the addendum versus the new contract is the same?
Correct.
Is that on their spaces that they've condensed out to, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Is it on the spaces that they're remaining in, the addendum?
Yes, it's just to take the contract from the full fourth and half of the third to amend it to just the half of the third.
Keith, do you have anything you wanna add on this? No, not really. Alright, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to receive your report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So would that be a yes, no, or a maybe on moving the DA's?
Yeah, thanks for asking that.
Pardon?
Yeah, I appreciated her asking that, because I was confused as to move, to receive a report. It reflects what activity?
Right.
What direction are we?
Yeah, you see your direction on that response? Yeah.
Yes, they can move.
Yeah, I'll move to go ahead and move the DA to the fourth floor.
And the only cost to that move is the door that you mentioned?
Correct, the two walls for the reception area and the door.
Gonna be no requests for carpeting or any other capital outlays associated with it?
And I've advised them of that, that if we can do different upgrades later, we'll look at that, but that the only thing that we can provide at this time is the reception area and actually physically moving them up there, and the glass door.
Okay, so that was how much?
Between five and six thousand dollars.
And that is paid for from?
From my current budget.
Current capital budget, okay? Now Rich wants to tell us there's additional cost.
Oklahoma County IT has absolutely no data presence on the fourth floor of juvenile. So there will need to be cables and networking cables run all the way through down to wherever they need to move to, second floor, third floor, wherever we have switches. We have no switches up there either.
We have internet.
It's not the same thing.
Okay.
We can, it can be cabled down. We do have switch presence on the second, first floor. We can cable them into existing infrastructure, but everything up there on the fourth floor is currently state.
Rich, will there need to be hardware that is purchased for this move, or can things be rearranged?
I'm gonna say no, because we could probably move the DA's office. There's already a switch there. We already have hardware for the DA on the third floor.
Okay.
That'll need to be moved, but that means all the cabling will need to be moved as well.
And that cabling cost would be internal as well?
It would be internal, yeah.
Already? Okay, so no additional outside expense is anticipated related to the IT?
No, other than just labor, no.
Okay, and the anticipated plan of occupancy or date of occupancy was when?
At your pleasure. Sooner than later would be their preference.
Let's make sure that we have IT capabilities before we go. And then the DA's office would need to understand that there'll be a time, hopefully it can be accomplished over the weekend, that they're down, it sounds like.
I'll communicate that with them.
Okay, alright. Rich, Dane, anything else there? Can you work with Hannah in the DA's office too? Okay, alright, so hearing all that, Charles, what was your motion again?
To go ahead and proceed with the move for the DA's office as outlined into the microphone just now. Date to be as soon as feasibly possible to get them up and operating in that space.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And then Hannah, one thing. None of this conflicts with moving your staff up there, correct?
This does not. So in the, in the current proposed plan, if courtrooms were to go out, prior to courtroom construction starting on two, the DA would take this section. My staff would occupy the rest of the fourth floor. So no, this move would not.
And we're not anticipating any additional cost for your staff to occupy four, correct?
I am not, because we would fit around the individual offices that are already there. Obviously, we would carpet, paint, do all those as we can in phases within my current budget.
Okay, alright, thank you for that reminder. Item six, Mr. Monroe is a request to locate some court services employee to the fourth floor of JJC. Man, that's gonna be crowded.
So, I got a floor plan and a highlighter, and I asked Hannah where we could be out of her way, anybody that wanted to go there or could go there. What you see is a possible location for Grant's employees, or some of them. Whether or not it makes sense, I don't know, but this is a place where he could go. He can see the space, and we've got a January thirty first deadline coming up, where we hope to be tearing things up next door in the investors' capital building. So he'll need to go someplace. There's been a discussion regarding some of his employees who need to be here for their purposes, the judiciary's request. I don't know who would need to go here. Perhaps a portion of this space could be used. We just needed to get something on the runway here and have some kind of a discussion as to whether it makes sense, who goes, who doesn't go, whatever.
Grant? Good morning. So, obviously, as you know, we'll no longer be occupying the investors' capital building, so obviously, we've been working for several months to try to find space. And as mentioned, we need to be here. We need to have a footprint here with community service and pre-trial here for various reasons. With that being said, the only spots that are even available here is we have space for four folks to go to the ninth floor in the courthouse. Those people will do all the kinda behind the scenes work, where they do the workups and the background checks. They deliver paperwork to judges, interviews with the folks in the jail. And then another space was located behind, on the first floor, Cleo's stand, the old snack bar back there, where we could occupy four people. We would put probably two community service intake counselors and two case managers that can be here on site. For example, if someone's in drug court and they need to come straight down and get signed up for shine, they would be here, opposed to, the concern was traveling out to juvenile. They just may not go, or may not make it, or know how to get there. So if they're here and already on site, they can just come downstairs. In addition, having pre-trial staff here, in the event someone's released from jail that needs a GPS, or needs to come over and see somebody right away, opposed to trying to find means to get out to juvenile, it'll be like just before, instead of going over to ICB now, it would essentially be the same location. It would just be on the first floor. So this would put us in three separate locations, but it, but at least solves the necessity to have a footprint here for the people that need it.
And Grant, what, what work is envisioned for the folks that are housed at, potentially housed at JJC? What will they be doing?
So that's gonna be the main office. That would be all your case management that happens, all the people that come in and do the drug test, everybody who comes in to sign up for community service. We see their intake counselor, our storage, the files, everything would be there.
And have we had an opportunity to visit with the DA's office and still be co-located on four? I wouldn't imagine. I see Hannah coming. We've talked to Hannah about the traffic that will be in and out of the building.
I have. They, because it's not the same clientele, it would be in the adult world versus the juvenile world. They do not have concerns with them being across the hall. And the judiciary as well as, or Judge Allen, I've spoken with, and she has no concerns.
With his staff being located here and on the ninth floor, my guess is there would be a need for all of this space, is that right?
I'm gonna have to go look at it, cause a lot of footprint's gonna be storage as well with files and that stuff. So I would prefer to go out there and walk around, take a look if possible. And if there's some we can take away, we'd certainly take away. I mean, we don't, we're not trying to take, just because it's there, just take it for someone else to have, you know, so.
You didn't ask to be moved.
Right, yeah, no, in a, in a perfect world, like I've mentioned before, we would, we would, all of us would be here together.
Keith, we're looking at a, a January thirty one. Why don't we double back, make sure that all of the parties that would be co-located together are okay with that situation? Grant, if you'll make sure the space works for you, and then report back, and I think we can make a decision.
I think another question should probably be asked while Hannah's in the room, whether or not there is enough space to co-locate the district attorney, Grant's office, and then Hannah's offices, which are expected to move to this floor as well, assuming we build out courtrooms on two.
And the court clerk's office, right, two?
Court clerk would build out on two. So court clerk would knock you to the fourth floor. And the answer to that is there is ample room. There is not necessarily ample individual offices built out. So my staff would take up the remainder of the individual offices that the DA's don't occupy. Now, there is tons of room where cubicles were previously, that we have ample room to build out individual offices. I just don't have the funding to build out individual offices, so yes and no.
I think that needs to be addressed, Grant. Do, do your folks need private spaces due to this sensitivity of some of the
Yes, but based on the, based on just looking at the floor plan, it appears that that satisfies that. The, the one issue that we're gonna have to work with, which I'll ask anybody and everybody, is, is a vehicle, cause there will be deposits and paperwork that does happen out there that's gonna have to get here daily. And so, you know, we'd need some sort of, if someone has a county vehicle that can
I'm sure between, we can find you an old beat-up dump truck or something.
Driving their own cars and
Dump truck, road grader?
We'll take it.
Okay.
It don't matter.
That road grader will help with your parking situation.
John Deere, we'll take it.
Okay, alright, so if ever Just Hannah on the space on the fourth floor was, as a state auditor, been looking at that as potential too as well?
I've spoken with Marla, Marla's actually here, about the potential for it, and my answer to her was, at the pleasure of the board, should there be individual space, I'd be happy to look at that. Again, it'll come down to individual offices. So right now, there would be room, yes. Individual offices built out, no.
Why don't we take a floor plan? We'll look at what individual offices need to be built and where. Take into consideration what Grant needs. Maybe you in the back, I don't know.
And then assign costs to this.
For those in the back, isn't there a state office building just a block away as opposed to JJC that would accommodate your needs? You don't, okay. Alright, well, how about this? How about everybody that potentially may want space at JJC's fourth floor, get with Keith, and by our next meeting, present us with a floor plan and any associated costs that might be necessary. Now, Grant, for you and your, all of your moves, whether it's ninth floor, first floor, or potentially JJC, you have a computer system that has to be segmented?
We gotta figure it out.
And where is that gonna be?
That'll be up on the ninth floor.
Perfect.
And it's secure and locked up, and it's, it's already been arranged and it's, it's figured out.
Great, okay. Alright, we're working towards a one thirty one?
Marla, did you have?
Prior to that.
I just wanted to add that the auditor's office, we share a drive with Oklahoma County, and that's how we get all of our information, and so that's our big thing that has to work.
Okay.
Wherever we're located.
Make note of that too, Rich and Dane. Make sure you include IT in the discussion as well. Okay, anything else? Okay, are you all good with having them come back?
With numbers.
With numbers and a more fleshed out plan?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Alright.
Alright, I'll move to receive your report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Rich.
Hi guys.
This is, discussing possible action regarding the cooling system in the server room.
Yeah, so on that agenda item, I attached a quote for repairs. It was the first quote we got from Air Technologies. I believe it's right around thirteen thousand dollars to repair that unit. That is for the west wall unit. It does not take into account the south wall unit. Those machines are thirty years old, and they use R twenty-two refrigerant, which is, I believe they're quoting a hundred and fifty-six dollars a pound. They hold about sixty pounds apiece. There is one circuit currently running cooling the entire data center right now. I talked to Mr. Monroe a little bit, and we, it would be nice to be able to replace those with chilled water units. What we wanted to start here was the discussion, do we want to spend that amount of money to fix thirty-year-old systems? Or do we wanna move forward with possibly putting in a newer chilled water unit? And would that be dependent on whether or not it has been decided to move the MIS server room at any point in time?
Okay, so there's a lot there.
There's a lot there, yes.
Let me ask this. Even if we are going to consider that the chilled, let's assume you stay where you're at. And we wanted to consider the chilled water as the, the means of cooling that room. It sounds like it's near critical in terms of the cooling of the room now, in that you've only got one unit that's working. So perhaps, while not ideal, spending this money to make sure that both units are working as we explore another, may be the way to go. Is that illogical?
Depending how quickly a chilled water system could be procured, and what it looks like in the room, how it fits, and how it works, that, that kinda thing. One thing is for sure, that these machines are gonna continue to break. The repairs are going to become more and more costly. I'll tell you that the Carrier six D compressors that are in there are like Mack trucks. They're dependable, wonderful machines, but you've got thirty tons of HVAC equipment there, running eighteen hours out of every twenty-four. We can save a lot of money, and I've reached out to OG&E, I've not heard anything back from them, about helping us with cost to replace these energy burners with a chilled water machine, so.
Okay, but, that's great, but in the meantime, if, if old equipment breaks, what happens? Say the other unit goes down, what, what's the consequence?
We will not have cooling in the data center.
And what does that mean?
It means the server room will overheat, and we'll, we will lose a lot of stuff.
Okay, so if I were the IT director? And are you considering this out of your budget, or you need a supplement?
I think we may need a supplement for a repair of that hefty. Now, the other question is, would it behoove us to go out and get more quotes, even though Air Technologies has been our vendor for, it, it is a pretty hefty quote.
I've had an issue or two with Air Technologies, and so I think that would be a good idea.
It is a new compressor, is that correct?
No, it's about thirty years old.
It's repairing, okay.
The, yes, there's actually, out of the four, I think, there's two in each unit, three of them are not working. All their free-on circuits are flat, I believe, is what Air Tech told me.
And are these all, these, these additional quotes that you're talking about, are, they can be done by telephone?
Yeah.
And that's what you're recommending, to proceed that way with more quotes, right?
Yeah, I kinda surprised Keith on this one. We just had kinda talked about it offhand, but the question I wanted to go with was, is we know we need to do the repairs. I don't think we have enough money in our budget to take care of them, and that's really where I'm coming to.
Now that we're gonna go out and try to ascertain a better price, then we can, you can see where you're at within your own budget. Can you not purchase some things right now that you might be contemplating for later in the year? And we go to BET and ask them to supplement your budget to take care of this? But my concern is that we know we have an issue. While we might like to do something different, not repairing it, on the, taking the chance that the other unit's gonna continue to function, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
And that's fine. That's really what we wanted to make sure of.
And so let me understand, though, the plan is to simultaneously be seeking different pricing for the immediate need of repair and looking at long-term?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Move to receive your report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elevators in the courthouse, Keith, automate.
We whisper the E-word. I have a date of December fourteenth, that's this Thursday. The state elevator inspector will show up, do the inspection after hours, and if all goes well, will release the elevator to us, at which time we can ride it, and Stacy can go to Oklahoma City and ask for a reimbursement for the monies we've spent on those elevators.
So we got the transfer switch, or whatever it was that we're waiting on for inspection. It's installed and everything?
That, that's been That, that's been taken care of.
Right.
Is my understanding.
Anything else? Your motion?
I'll move to receive report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item nine is, uh, our owner's rep report on our county capital ARPA projects. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Um, start with, on the elevator projects, we are working on construction documents and proceeding, looking at probably February for all the documents to be done, February to March, and we'll go out for bidding. Juvenile Justice Lobby, uh, is going very well, probably early April completion. I think we have a couple photographs, we just wanted to show you, if you haven't been over there where we're at. So, we're doing pretty well on, the contractor's doing very well on progress. And so, I think early April is pretty attainable. Uh, going on, uh, no change on Court Clerk, um, Pavilion's still there. Uh, Sheriff's Office Midwest City, we have ninety percent documents. We provided engineers' comments and review, and so that equipment should be out for order this week. And, uh, their engineers are looking at our comments, so I think we're pretty good check there. Uh, Clerk's, uh, Clerk's Books, first floor, uh, I understood there was a review of a meeting of the scope on asbestos, and so, once we get a timeline for that, we'll, we'll be able to move forward.
The clerks met, I think, with a couple of the offices, and they still have some to go.
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow with them.
So. But the documents for the renovation for the entry first floor is ready to go whenever it's appropriate. Third floor, obviously, no change. Again, the first floor, we have the documents, Drainage Culvert, uh, we're at thirty-seven percent complete, they're making progress and, and, and moving on. Uh, Juvenile Justice Roof, uh, is almost complete, and we're, we have a scheduled walkthrough, um, middle of January for the warranty from the manufacturer, and we should wrap that up with no further problems or items. The, again, the elevators are good. Uh, Behavioral Health Services, we're just waiting for, moving forward with location and, and how to, uh, proceed on that. The existing jail HVAC, I understand the contract is out or in review. And also, the roof, the roof replacement there is also out. I saw the repending, uh, insurance and bonds from our roofing contractor, so, uh, making progress.
Back on the Clerk Jury Pavilion, I believe he's gonna schedule some time to meet with your offices. He's got a different idea about that project that he wants to talk to you about, and he'll bring it to Policy and Governance at the appropriate time.
Alright, any questions on Mr. White?
I'll move to receive report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to reopen item six, if we could, please, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keith Grant has gone, Hannah has gone, um, and this would, this discussion would loosely apply to, um, potentially item five. But as we're beginning to look at sending more and more, uh, departments to JJC, um, I'm concerned about parking. And, um, so I would, I would ask that you would also be mindful of that in your discussions as to who goes there and what impact it may or it may not have. I know if the courts go, we're looking at some secured parking.
We're looking at secured parking anyway, that's been a request.
Well.
More of it.
Yeah, but, um, between the function that they're there principally to serve, um, and then all of these other entities that may go, um, parking may become an issue, and I just ask you to consider that.
I'll see if I can formulate a number of game plans that might work.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, that's the end of the discussion on item six. Uh, Stace, item ten is, um, update on the Citizens Advisory Board.
They meet tomorrow.
Okay.
Off just a little bit here.
The, I don't think, take any action on that. Uh, citizen participation, anyone? Board comments? Charles?
None.
Don?
No, thank you.
None here, new business? Can we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
I've not locked out or something, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, being, uh, past the appointed time, call PBA Advisor to order, notice the meeting was posted on December eighth. We're all here. Item one's approved the minutes of November twenty-seventh.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item two is a catch-all item for our ARPA capital projects. Stacy, anything of note here?
No, we'll put it in the yet, owner's rep.
Okay, so, no action. Three is an update from Mr. White on the PBA ARPA projects. Oh, again.
Good morning again. Um, Emergency Ops, uh, we should have ours designed, first reviewed in January, still, that's still, uh, on track. Also, on, under Emergency Ops, uh, we've, we have a, um, final change order in, from the designer that we're looking at on the increased scope, from going from a nine-and-a-half million dollar project to a seventeen-and-a-half million dollar project just for liability and different items.
I sent you guys an email on that this morning.
And Stacy, is that the, what will necessitate the additional ARPA funds you, you referenced?
Yes.
But we have a, we have a, uh, meeting of the minds or agreement on what, what that would be with the architect.
Okay, alright, that, that's helpful.
Elevators are the same, they're, we're still looking at February, March for, uh, construction documents. And then on the, uh, camera security, um, after this report was issued, uh, we received a final change order of amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-four cents, uh, for the electrical convenience plugs and necessities, uh, in, in the parking garages. And so, we will, uh, submit that to Stacy and, and recommend its approval.
Okay, anything else?
It's a twenty thousand, I'm sorry for both.
For, yes, it's for actually one tin pole to help to, to maintain the camera's security in the building.
Metro, is that right?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Mr. Barnes, did you provide us with this? Magical, alright. Um, okay, is our motion to receive this report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen participation, board comments?
None.
Nothing.
New business? Adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.